Called the Council of the City of West Liberty in order and we are joined by all members of the council here. So I would entertain an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
All right, it's been moved and then seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. And this will be the city council meeting minutes and the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three treasurer's report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, all signified by, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, it has been approved. Next up is, is the proclamation by me for that we want to support slavery and anti-human trafficking prevention during the month of January. And as I understand it, this has been a proclamation that has been given in previous years it here in the city of West Liberty and shows our support for efforts across the state to end these horrible practices. So it's also, as I understand it, I don't need a motion or a vote of the council, but just to inform you that that will go forward. I will tell you that as you look at it, if you have had any concerns with the wording of it or things that way, I'm amenable to those. My plan is to sign the proclamation. Next up are reports, and so we have a report from the city engineer who is not here. Do you have anything that?
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, he, Leo Foley, he reached out to me just shortly before the meeting and said he was going to be unable to attend. Um, I can just um give you that we've been in communications with the holiday and the weather, some things have been delayed. We have a couple of things. We have a meeting that we're trying to set to go over closing out the projects. Where we're at in the process of the open projects such as well number two. And of course, the roofing on the powerhouse is going to be on hold until the weather clears. Along with that, then the discussion of the meeting would be to go over the existing capital improvement project plan that's in place. Identify what has been completed and updated and talk about annexation. So city engineer, along with that too, we're working to set that waste water treatment plan upgrade meeting with West Liberty Foods for that discussion as well. So those are the things that we're coordinating over the week to set those meetings off.
Okay, all right.
Is there any, I should say, is there any questions that council has that I can share with the city engineer when I speak with him?
In your packet are the reports, city manager. As I read Lee's report, it was very clear, all the different activities that go through the city manager's role and then good electrical report included the communications and safety, the water treatment plant and the library reports are all there. We have our police chief here, we have the library director, you have the reports. So let me check and see if there are questions, comments, things that folks are interested in knowing a little bit more about.
I did have one question on the safety training schedule. I like to see that. That's, that's a really nice calendar. Is this something that if a council person wanted to attend and were able to?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
This part of the reason why I wanted to move to this lot. And, thank you.
I like that. And we just advise if they're standing to be through the line, just to notify us.
Oh, yeah. I had a question too, if I can remember it. Um, oh, are we going to have a poster to electrician, head of electrician or?
Um, we are going to have a discussion with, this Friday, we have a employee council committee meeting set up, and so that's going to be part of our discussion is that process.
Are there any committee reports? We do know that the personnel committee is fed on some concerns. And other than that, I'm not sure that there have been any committee meetings that have taken place.
Yeah, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. Just the policy grievance committee met, just on some personnel matters, but that's.
Yeah.
I would like to thank the different departments for kind of crossing into other departments and helping, especially during the recent weather events that happened. I think that shows a lot of the work when they can help out each other and definitely helps the community, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, I thought they did a tremendous job with what we had talked through during this past week.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just add on to, so again, I, I as well want to continue to thank all of the hub work and and everybody chipping in and doing what needed to be done. I can tell you that prior to the snow events coming in, we did have a city supervisor meeting. And so everyone was proactive in that meeting, saying, you know, where, where they would be, that they would be. But we all were all we at that point in time that it was all hands on deck because it was looking to be a pretty significant storm that we hadn't seen in a, in a number of years. And I would just remind everybody, I mean, the, the, the good thing about this is, is that we don't see significant snowfall or weather like this very often.
Right.
So it's not like all of us can go out and practice for these events. So when they don't happen very often, I mean, it's all fresh to us as well as to any of our other community members or rural members that haven't driven in it or haven't dealt with it. So I believe that again, especially without West Liberty and other rural communities in Iowa that, you know, our patience and grace and understanding about what the event brings. I'm happy to say we had no power outages, which if anybody was watching the news, there are a lot of communities around us who did have power outages. Some of them are still having that and they were quite lengthy. Our, at this point in time, I'll get some more data from Adam Reinhardt, our public works director, but at this point in time, it's my understanding that in addition to regular work hours, our street department added thirty-seven hours on top of what they already worked on every, every week. There were a couple of accidents that occurred with city vehicles. Fortunately, nobody was injured and so we'll get those handled and processed as, as we need to. Mayor, I'd like to thank you. I know you made an extra effort to make some, some food for the staff as well.
I don't think I ever saw that one.
Yeah, no. Likewise, other staff members and our community businesses were very supportive. We could make it in and be open to the city staff as well. So again, I mean, we don't like to see these events happen very often, but it's always good to know that we have a supportive community that comes together.
All right. Next up are beer and liquor licenses. And we have applications for three of them. So do we need to do a motion for each one or separately? Okay, so separately, first we have the Flower Yard LLC. And so I would entertain a motion to special class B retail native wine license.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
So this is, they just sell wine in shop, they do not serve it. It is something that they had previously and it's just something that they like to be able to offer along with when people are coming in to get flowers.
Is there further discussion? And this is a consent?
Correct.
Okay, we'll call the motion then. All in favor of granting this license signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay sign. The ayes have it, it's approved. Next is the Muscatine County Fair twelve-month Class C retail liquor license effective March eighth of twenty twenty-four, pending approval of the dram shop. Is there a motion to approve this liquor license?
Motion to approve liquor license to Muscatine County Fair?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Has there been any issues involved with the alcohol at the, at the location? Does anybody know? I would recommend you speak with Chief Houser. Okay, Chief Houser, do you know of any of?
I think I've been heard to.
Okay. And depending on the issue of their insurance, once that comes through, everything else is up to date for them. So once that comes through, then I will go ahead and approve it if you guys approve it.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? All in favor of approving the liquor license for the Muscatine County Fair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the liquor license is approved. Next is Lamis nightclub, twelve-month Class C retail liquor license effective January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Pending, pending approval of the dram shop.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Again, I wanted to ask Chief Houser, has there been any incidences there involving the establishment?
I know it's been like, they haven't had as many events as though.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor Proton, I just wanted to follow up because council member Schultz did reach out a year or so, because even about a year ago, I know that there was there was just meetings held with the owners of Plama, just to have some discussions with some incidents that had occurred and they were receptive of those. And based on that, I've not, so we've since, as Chief Houser was saying, you know, we've not noted any incidents. We haven't noted anything that they haven't been abiding by.
Complaints or anything, no.
I think it would be a good idea, maybe there's a check in with them. We could pop in and just make sure, I know last year, I think we talked about occupancy.
Yeah, and
security.
Security and timing women on, when they're going to stop serving.
Yes, that's right. Just kind of maybe just chat with them. Charles going more.
Chief Houser and I can, and again, that would be, I think that's great. We could even do the introduction with Chief Houser as well, so they're familiar with who's chief now.
Is there further discussion? We'll take it to a vote then. All in favor of granting this liquor license, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay sign. The ayes have it, the liquor license is approved. Now we've come to about a little over a half million dollars in vendor voucher claims. And so the list was sent. And so I believe I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve vendor voucher claims list?
And a second? Second, and now discussion.
I was curious on line item forty-nine for the wheat box modification road use. I'm just wondering what that was for, is it for the?
It was my understanding on the new wheat box, it just needed some minor welding in order to retrofit it to the, to the vehicle.
And all good to go now.
It's a, it's a chassis attachment style. It's not an actual vehicle. It attaches to the, like, I brought trailers, I think.
Are there other questions on the vendor list? All right, motion is on the floor. All those in favor of approving the vendor voucher claim list number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, the vendor list is approved. We are now to the point in the agenda for public comment and correspondence. And it's time for, set aside for public comments, city council, public comments or correspondence, city manager or city clerk to have the public comments. So we'll start with public comments. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Paul Reed. Still on Mexican Drive here. I've been submitting emails left and right for quite a few months now in regard to this upcoming appeal that I've asked for. And I did submit my acknowledgement to that, so I did approve for January thirtieth at six o'clock. My only issue is, is, and it's no offense to the city manager here, but I consider the city manager basically a witness in this whole ordeal. And I would greatly appreciate if all communications and all contact from here are going to help me down through, you know, the city clerk or the deputy city clerk. It just doesn't seem fair to me that for me to have this appeal, but then have a person know everything in regards to what I'm going to discuss during that appeal. To me, that's not fair here because it, just by talking to the, the, I believe the cities and Iowa Budsmans office, you know, I, I have that right to make that request and I've made that request on multiple occasions. And it went on deaf ears. Nobody responded back to me. And the only one that actually has been responding back to me has been the mayor pro temp. I've asked for you yourself, Mr. Mayor, to respond back and haven't gotten any response back, which kind of upsets me because, you know, I, I figured, you know, I would at least get a response from you saying that you acknowledged my emails. And I haven't heard anything from you, so I'm, I'm not too happy about that, but I'll get over that. The thing is, is I want a fair hearing in this whole matter. I've already, I'm already feeling like I'm being railroaded as it is. And by Miss Gertz responding back to everything, including when I didn't even, you know, tag her in certain messages, yet she's still responding, which tells me she's seeing a lot of the messages that are coming through. And like I said, I obviously have to come here and say it publicly because I'm not getting the answer back on emails of whether or not you guys could make that, that happen. I, I, it's a simple request for a fair hearing. And I, I would hope that you guys would respect that, that has a mayor, you know, in the city council. I mean, that's all I'm gonna say is, is right now since thirty, but I, I really wish and hope that you guys will respect those wishes. Because I, I think it's only big, this attorney's office, Dallas Lynch, which is the city's attorney, is representing the fire department now in the civil rights complaint that I filed against them. So I'm really trying to figure out what's going on here. You know, it's just none of this stuff is adding up and making sense. And so I hate to have to bring it up during a public session, but that, nobody else is responding to me, giving me any type of answers when I ask the questions. So I would appreciate it if I can at least give me a response fast from somebody answering the questions that I've been asking. So that's all I have.
Okay. We don't have this matter on the agenda and so we can't respond here other than to say that we've heard your concerns.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, I just lost.
We're still on public comments.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, there it came back. Sorry about that. Okay, so are there other public comments besides Mr. Reed's comments? Okay, city council comments and correspondence.
Yeah, I have not received any comments or. As a, all right. Oh, I have, this is a question from a citizen, Margaret Jensen, concerning just thoughts of putting different events up and projects around her property and I refer that to manager Gertz and she's going to be handling that.
I'll start at the bar and beer too, so I'm not doing the same every time. So council member Martinez. Okay.
Um, just me personally, I just wanted to, um, you know, on the record, say that I'm greatly sorry for the loss of the Elizondo family. Maria Elizondo has passed away recently and I attended her funeral. And knowing that Maria was a staple in a lot of our childhood lives and, and recent lives, I wanted to just put it out there that we're, that I am very sorry that the Elizondo family is going through that and that they're in my thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Um, I just, I received two public comments from two citizens here in the community on how much they deeply appreciate the city departments and city staff during this winter drop we've had and the snow removal and the cleaning of streets, clearing of streets. So they wanted me to forward that on so that the staff knew how appreciative they are.
But, yeah, they did an excellent job. All right, now time for the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have received correspondence from Mr. Craig Ash on, in the, on North Town Hall in the downtown commercial district. He has requested to be heard by council. I recommended the next upcoming meeting is to go over a special request for parking outside of the city ordinance with the downtown. So you'll be hearing from him, to my understanding, at the next city council. Along with that, I would like to recognize we lead director Ken Brooks on behalf of the West Liberty Police Department. And Chief, you're welcome to put anything in on this, but it's my understanding I was communicated to by Officer Holmes and Sergeant Strong, they presented Ken with a community service award, recognizing him for all the hard work that he put into raising funds for the shop with the cop. And then the participation with the shop with the cop. And so I just wanted to take time to publicly recognize Ken for that award and that he will be posting that on the city page to share with the community as well. So thank you, Ken, for letting you do. We appreciate your passion and your dedication to the city, along with the community. And then the other award announcement that we have, it's been a busy week of busy people. So Terry Gert is our building inspector. Terry Gert has been with the city of West Liberty part-time. We say part-time, but we all know he probably puts in way more hours than he has time. But he's been with the West Liberty for nearly thirty years. He's always excited to share and educate city staff, community members, contractors, developers, however he can help. I mean, he certainly is not a person that is looking to make it difficult for people to, to build or do their projects or, you know, to expand in West Liberty. He's always looking at, how can I educate, how can I support your project? And it's something where the, where the gentleman can tell you no and you're okay with it, you know, because he, he educates you on what. So, so just, I wanted to go through these notes real quick here. So, and we will have this as well on our page, so we can have the community know this. But he was, he was presented a prestigious award of building official of the year. And so that is through the Iowa Association of Building Officials in West Des Moines. And this was on Thursday, January eleventh, where he didn't know he was going to get presented with the award that they surprised him with that. So, so we are very excited and we definitely know the value that we have in Terry Gert here. And we'll be excited to share that information online here soon for, if anyone's listening, so. Along with that, the only other communication pieces I've received as well. I know communication director Brittany and I have been working, trying to cover a lot of questions coming from social media. Thank you for doing all your work and staying on top of those, all those hours as well. But lots of positive, supportive comments and for city staff and all the work that they've done, so. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. New business. Letter A, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on sending an RFQ for the county attorney or for the city attorney, for the city of West Liberty. And so we'll need discussion of this, a possible motion and their consent vote. Thoughts about this?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, you know, if you see here in the history of our relationship with Stanley, Landy and Hunter, that was, it started off with a relationship, probably the latter fighter, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Since then, Steve Haberkamp and the attorneys of Stanley, Landy and Hunter have served the city of West Liberty very well, very professional. But our due diligence to our, to our taxpayers is to make sure that we are being timely and we're staying on top of, looking at, making sure that our services are being provided, that we're, we're getting the services. I know Stanley and Landy Hunter has changed quite a bit over the years there. When we first entered into our relationship, we had a number of attorneys. And like any, any organizations, they go through a transition where they shrink or they have less attorneys available. So sometimes that's good when you don't need a lot of attorneys, you know, when it comes to human resources and all the things that you see listed in the RFQ. But it also can be timely if you do need that and you don't have that available. So again, I mean, we, Sherry and I worked together to create our RFQ based on the needs of the city of West Liberty and we would just entertain if you have any input or anything else that councillor Mary, you'd like to add to that and then we can create a timeline to get that submitted.
Is there other discussion? Oh, did I ask for a motion? I probably.
You won't need it until after everything's done and then we can ask for a motion to proceed forward with whatever direction we guys would like to take right now.
All right. Is there other questions, discussion, ideas, thoughts from members of the council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to proceed with the RFQ.
Motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
So we're going to do option one on the, action one, correct? Move forward.
Yes. That was the intent. Let me check with council member, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we'll proceed with option one. B, discussion and appropriate action on reimbursement of lost wages and mileage for Amber McFarland for incomplete citation ticket. And there was information put in the packet for you regarding this. And so we will have first discussion on it. So are there questions as you reviewed this from the members of the council?
Uh, yeah. Did we have a little bit of background information on this, if that's possible?
Um, Madam Mayor Proton, so the history of this situation is the city nuisance community officer, Mr. Ortiz, I've been working with the the homeowner and, and they had a nuisance pertaining to their garage roof. And they, as they worked through that, there was communication. Um and they, as they worked through that, um there was communication um. That had to go to the next level in our nuisance process where a citation has to be cited to the homeowner. Uh we're on that citation, a court date is created and that. That's our opportunity to go before um the judge to, you know, explain why possibly it hasn't been completed. Or to make further arrangements in the deadline that it will be completed and refined with the end post. Um however, uh Ms. McFarland did communicate um to the, is my understanding that she communicated. With the nuisance officer that if they completed, but there was already a court date set. And so then she followed the citation before her and went to court. In Muscatine County so that information could be refinded that she had completed the the uh requirement to be. Uh compliance with the ordinance. However, um the citation that was um. Provided was not completely um followed through on the city side of it. Um as the court was not notified nor was the date set with the court. So therefore, um Ms. McFarland forfeited a day of wages um with her business. To make other arrangements uh because she has a daycare. And so with that also then her mileage to drive to Muscatine only to find out that. Um unfortunately, the city had failed to follow through on their part of setting the court date or at least notify Ms. Mc. Ms. McFarland that she did not have to appear before court because it had been correctly. So unfortunately, these are one of those smartphone moments. Um and so uh we're corporate and um since this has happened, we are in the process of discussing. Um uh completely different uh procedure. We're also wanted to await for um Chief uh Hauser. Um so we could coordinate with him as well, so we can uh manage this not happening in the future. But it would be my recommendation um that we. We take accountability for um our failure to complete the record as it should have been done and um reimburse sort of the losses.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? I would entertain a motion that we uh follow the recommendation from the city manager. Uh and do the reimbursement of lost wages and mileage.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the reimbursement to Ms. Amber McFarland for total. Uh four hundred eighty-eight dollars of lost wages and forty-two miles at the IRS mileage rate. For Ms. McFarland.
Is that a second? Yes. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Um I definitely feel bad for Ms. McFarland. I know she's one of the. Daycares in West Liberty that we value very much, but I also understand um. In the past, when I've had daycares, they have vacation days that are paid from the families. And so was their documentation showing that she wasn't paid for those days? So she provided, she provided attached documentation. Yeah. That's all I need to know, yeah.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, uh the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, uh the reimbursement will occur. Item uh ten C, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on approving the goal setting and strategic planning documented. Um provided by Callahan Municipal Consultants LLC.
At at this point, Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to just go ahead and make a motion to receive and file? This uh document? For this strategic planning and goal setting report verse twenty-four, twenty-five?
It's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay sign. Item ten C have been approved.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to follow up on, um and thank you, Mary Council, for um the approval of the strategic planning. At this point in time, the next steps will be um as the city manager, I will. Take the information that we have in our strategic plan and begin a process of setting um goals for those projects. And identifying with departments um how they align in our upcoming budget. Um and if it's not within this next year's budget, then we will set it to either a capital improvement plan or a equipment remodel plan. And identify that through the goal statements.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, uh would it be possible to? If I could work with uh communication specialist Ms. Woodson on drafting a um calendar to put it. Either at city hall or. For our uh city council meetings that list the priorities and how we can check off them, would that be something that?
I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ten D, resolution twenty uh twenty-three zero one one six. Hyphen one two zero, a resolution to consider amending the Iowa Economic Development Nuisance. Property and abandoned building remediation program. Um so um. We need a motion for that. And this will be a roll call.
Motion for resolution to consider amending the IED nuisance property and abandonment building remediation program?
Yes. Well, you made that motion. Did you make the? Okay, and uh council member Dominguez seconded. Okay, so is there a discussion?
I I just wanted to clarify, this is just to, isn't this primarily to reassign dates for? When these needed to be adjusted, turned in, is that what primarily what the amended? Part is?
Yeah, not as per to reach out. So um at the time of the reimbursement that was um processed for. Um SGA in regards to the um the the loan. Um that was, I believe it's a no, no payment loan. And at that time, um we were just um there, we were just a little different on the the timeline that was originally approved on amendment one. And so when reaching out to um the Iowa Economic Development Group, um they had pointed out that we needed to. Provide a second amendment to, just as you're saying, to align the correct dates with the time of the reimbursement of the funds. And um to start the process for the payments. Um likewise, then what we'll do is set that um. The loan payments um as they'll be required to be paid back to the city by SGA. On that timeline at zero percent interest. Um and the city is responsible. And we can also levy debt, levy debt, or just in case if the payment's not made, then we would be able to levy the debt in order to pay the debt. In lieu of not receiving, but we're not concerned about not receiving with payment. It'd just be a practice. Um to make sure that we have funds to cover. And the project has been completed. Um it's a beautiful project. It's um, I don't know. And if you have anything more to add on that.
I believe all the housing components of that have been completed um and rented. And there are two commercial spaces. Uh initially, they were working on one large commercial space, but they decided to split that in two. Um one has been built out and has a tenant and a cardiologist office is in there. Um then we're in by own negotiations for the second split commercial space, and it's just a waiting plan for it.
Is there further discussion? This is a roll call vote, so the clerk will call the roll. Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
McFerrin, yes. Dominguez, yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Okay, the uh approved. So that brings us to the the last item, uh A, resolution twenty uh twenty-three. Zero one one six hyphen one two one, a resolution to approve and adopt uh writing off. Uh parking tickets for the West Liberty Police Department. Is there a motion to uh approve this resolution?
Motion to approve. Second.
And it's been moved and seconded. We're now ready to discuss writing off parking tickets.
Because we will not get it back.
Is there further discussion besides the very first? Yeah, do you have any questions?
I guess the process of parking tickets.
So we collect on our parking tickets that are issued here. Um what we did back in two thousand nineteen. I haven't think about that. It's been a long time. Um we signed the twenty-eight agreement with the county to be able to collect on. Parking tickets that were not paid. During the transition where there was no longer a police secretary that had got lost in transition. Um when Sergeant Strong was interim chief, he kind of picked it up and took over it and had a meeting with city manager Gertz. And previous mayor Ethan Anderson to discuss which ones they wanted to kind of. Get rid of because of the timeframe. So if you notice on here, most of them are. A long time ago, um so we will not be submitting those for collection. Uh we have other ones that will come before you when Chief Hauser works through that. Um to collect on those, but these ones would be the ones that we're gonna write off our system.
And the one from March twenty twenty-three, is that a downtown president ever writing off?
So the parking tickets, um the entire ticket was packed, so the person never received a copy of the citation. Okay.
Is there further discussion? This is a roll call vote, um and it has been moved and seconded. The clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
McFerrin, yes. Dominguez, yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Freezer.
Yes.
Right, motion passes by.
Well, um not everyone jump at once, but we can entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded by representative, oh yeah, representative party this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.